So we can, we can start? Okay. I'd like to call the meeting of the U-46 School Board to order. And are there any changes to the agenda before we start? And will we have, will we have for the agenda, there's some hand carry stuff, information or under?
Yes.
Yes? Okay. Okay. So we're good. All that stuff is gonna work. And we have, I believe we also, we're adding to executive session, a student matter. So we have a student disciplinary matter and a student matter under executive session for U-46.
Yes.
Materials were distributed beforehand.
Yep.
Great. Hearing no changes. Visitors and staff to be heard. There's somebody around the corner there that, no.
Yeah.
So we'll move directly into the consent agenda. I'll review the consent agenda and then ask if anybody wants anything to be removed. We have the approval of the warrants, which is customary and recommended. Approval of meeting minutes from March 8th and from March 31st. Those were attached to your board information. And we have a budget transfer that, and we can thank the generosity of Brad Luck, who is, heads up our rugby team. And he is interested in donating the stipend that he earns from that position back to the, back to the program so that they have additional funds. Anybody want anything removed from the consent agenda? Can I have a motion to move the consent agenda as presented?
Some moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor of the consent agenda as presented signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, abstentions? It passes.
Thank you.
So this is, this is actually our first board meeting after our annual meeting on Monday. So it is traditionally the time which our board reorganizes. There's a series of things that we need to do, some a little bit less than tradition because this is our final year of existence with the Essex-Westford School District coming on board on July 1st. But it is a time in which we have to designate officers and roles for the board as well as a number of things that are required by statute. So I'm actually gonna hand it over to the superintendent to do the first part.
Okay. Thank you, Brian. I'm going to open up nominations for board chair at this time.
I would like to nominate Liz Suban.
Liz Suban's been nominated. Are there any other nominations? Hearing none. All those in favor of Liz as your new U-46 board chair say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Congratulations.
Thank you.
And now you can continue on. Oh, so why don't we do clerk right away so that you can?
Do I get to stop typing right now? Is it right now?
It happens. This is a peaceful transition of power.
Right. Somebody else got some notes too. Great.
Do you wanna open up nominations for clerk next?
Yes, I'd like to open up nominations for clerk. And I'd like to nominate Daniel Teft.
I'll second that.
Erin seconds. Wait, but I am taking these notes right now.
He's not typing one second ahead of time. Oh, wait. I got them. I have to be confirmed for it. Then I can start typing. We'll combine notes later.
Okay. Erin second. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Congratulations.
You're on.
Great.
And then vice chair. Opening up nominations.
I'd like to nominate Erin Knox.
Second?
Okay. All those in favor, sorry. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Congratulations, Erin.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Could be a brutal 90 days.
I got my back, Erin.
But you never know what tomorrow has waiting for ya.
I know.
No, you never do.
Now you're gonna appoint legal counsel. There's a recommendation. And you can do this all in one motion?
Okay. So we're gonna, and where is the wording for that?
So it's in my notes. I put you here right here too if you wanna use paper.
Yeah, I'll just use paper. Okay, so the next, we're gonna appoint legal counsel and we're recommending that the board appoint the firm of Wright Jones PLC to represent our district. So I would entertain a motion for that.
I think you do the whole thing.
Okay, so let's do, and the meeting schedule. U-46 board meetings will take place on an as-needed basis. Grant authority to pay bills, and this is routine and involves paying vendors in advance of approved warrants. This practice serves the district, saves the district unnecessary expenses incurred with late payments. This is routine. Establish the newspaper of record and our only option is the Burlington Freepass. That's also routine. Authorize the clerk or chair to sign warrants on behalf of the board.
Members acceptance of V S B A Code of Conduct. Our State School Boards Association recommends this document as a foundation for board members' work. And these minutes we have not yet received, so we'll pull those for your next meeting, annual meeting minutes.
The annual meeting minutes.
Haven't yet, yeah, I've received.
So I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Some moved.
Al, some moved? Oh, wait, are you typing now or should I finish this? Should I do this? Should I finish today? What's the protocol for that?
I'd say I.
He's ready to go. He's ready to go. I know it's hard to give it up, but.
No, I'm good. I'm good. Thank you very much. That's fine.
Erin made the motion and Al seconded.
You got it. That's good. Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So the motion passes and the consent agenda is approved. Annual meeting vote, annual meeting vote review. Do you wanna do that? Do we wanna talk about the vote results? Everybody have them? We all received them?
I was in Boston, so I don't know.
Oh. We passed the budget.
Good job.
Well, I think it's important to say that all the articles that we warned as a board passed unanimously.
Yep.
So there was, there was very few items of consequence there, but hey, you go all perfect.
You gotta, you gotta mention it.
Absolutely.
Because you don't get in the playoffs if you print your perfect game, you still the perfect game.
Great.
So reelected was you to this board?
To this board.
And Erin, right?
Mm-hmm.
Congratulations. Double congrats tonight, right?
Yeah.
Reept. Thank you for that. I have to say how much I appreciate that with the limited time and having board members who've served for a long time to be able to dissolve the organization will be really important. So thank you for your leadership and your time.
Thank you.
On the, on the voting results that occurred on the budget, I thought it was, you know, it was a very strong statement of the support of the community.
Yeah, in all three communities.
On the budget and on the, on the new forming. It's a great way to start, almost a three to one kind of situation. So, and the tech center, it's amazing support in the community to have that type. So, really.
Wonderful. And also to acknowledge the turnout for the annual meeting this year. There were about 50 people there for the E W S D portion of that meeting, which I thought was really good to have people come out and ask questions and, and to that level of engagement was really encouraging to me. So thanks, everyone in the viewing audience who came out.
And a contested school board race.
And a contested school board race, which was won by one vote.
Right. And that was one of the things that we said with one board, you know, it would be an opportunity to, you know, really have the community provide some contested races and really make those commitments. So it happened right in the first year.
Yeah. So. Came down, so just a reminder that every vote matters.
Every vote matters. Absolutely.
Okay, anything else on that? Moving right along. The capital plan need?
I can take that.
Okay.
So Bruce Murdo, property service director, and I'm sure both Rob and Bob can attest to the fact that the H S bleachers are in pretty tough shape. Actually, they've become a safety concern. And I've asked Bruce to look through the capital plan currently for U-46. We had earmarked $250,000 for 2020 to replace those, but those bleachers in the new E W S D board work, and we just can't wait. So we're thinking about looking in, over the U-46 current budget and capital plan and see if we could afford this expenditure. Property services, Bruce Murdo assures me we can. And with the caveat that we'd have to have them on site before June 30.
They are the original bleachers, 1970.
Is that right?
Yes.
So they served us well.
I'm just curious, so, so that was an allocate, a significant allocation for '20.
Correct.
And so, how, how exactly does that get funded? Just explain that to me. Does that be a pretty immediate?
Annually, they'll, they'll look at what the needs are. That was sort of the forecast out. And I think that that board will have to just look at reprioritizing some of the needs.
Okay.
Both Superintendent Andrews and I have been able to say if there's any way we can fix and complete some of the projects that are incomplete within our current school budgets, we're gonna try to do that so the schools are in the best shape they can be in as the new board becomes operational on July 1st.
Yeah. This is not the first time we've had to do some preventive work on the bleachers. Refresh what we did before, just if you recall.
You probably have a better recollection than I do. I know that we replaced some of the metal pieces and, you know, really have been cobbling them along to last, but now even set up is dangerous for our crews.
Is it replacing?
This would be a repli, this is like a full.
Yeah, this, this is like, yeah. Because this is like a quarter of a million dollar expenditure.
There have been, I would say at least seven years where there has been, every year there's a instructional approval, if you will, to make sure that they're safe, certification, if you will. And there have been significant replacements to the supports. And now we're finding bolts and screws misses as we finish the winter season. This is predominantly the, the time they're used the most. And with some bars near the top for the back railings being unable to be repaired, it's getting to the point now where, you know, you can't pretend not to know what you know.
Yeah.
So it is a real concern. And they are 1970.
Yeah, 50 years of service.
The, the number of maintenance folks to pull them out and set them up and then break them down, you need a crew of six to eight people. And with newer bleachers, they're much lighter. And with, excuse me, motorized jacks, you can have one to two people set up and take down safely.
That's great.
So there's that aspect from the, from the worker's perspective.
Thank you, Rob.
Did we have any funds left over on our capital plan?
That's what I'm looking for.
Okay, so that would be attributed, that would help to defray?
Yes.
Some of that expense.
Either our capital plan or any, any funding within the existing budget for maintenance.
Okay.
For example, if, you know, Bruce and I talked a little bit about utilities. And so if we're under in utilities, applying that.
Because that was my only other question is just, is just if we are gonna move funds or reallocate, that it was coming from strictly maintenance, capital, okay.
Yes.
So not, not any other area?
Not in education, no.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you for that question.
Okay.
We had had quite a discussion at E W S D concerning whether funds that have been earmarked for specific capital projects could be reallocated. And I don't think we've had that discussion at this board. I don't have a problem with that. I just wanna check in with everyone to make sure we all agree.
Yeah, I think, I mean, just speaking from the past practice is that the future years are really informational and more exhibit-wise, just because each year as you get closer, you reassess priorities and pricing and so forth. So there's always a bit of fluidity that happens in those future year projects. And then there's another aspect in which some projects go over or under, and we've always worked in an allocation basis, like this is what you have, very much like our budget does. So I know that for the front, we understood that there was, there was a fund balance within there over a series of years of projects, up, down, changes and so forth. And that we tapped some of that to, to do more than just a sheet of asphalt. So we have some past practice, but I think you're, you know, it's always good to make sure that you're disciplined. And I think that that's a good conversation at the, at the new district level.
The last question I had was, well, the funds would come out strictly out of the existing E H S capital plan and not out of the high school fund balance. How, what do you, how are you looking at this?
I was looking at it from the capital plan.
Okay.
And I think that there's enough in that capital plan to cover the cost because as Rob made the point, the costs are not gonna be as extravagant, we don't believe, because of the new technology and the creation of bleachers now.
Okay.
So I think we're gonna not see that high-end expense.
Okay. Good.
I think just to give room, you did say that if, depending upon how it works out, that if operating dollars were going to be used, it would have to have been dollars that were allocated to maintenance, but not necessary.
Good.
Is that okay? So that, in theory, that could be going into the operating fund balance, but it is dedicated dollars that would be through management, wouldn't be necessary.
Okay.
Rather than, as Erin said, not, not saving money on textbooks and then putting it towards there, so.
And just a point for the board as well is the, the portability that we enjoy, which is a, allows us to maximize the space for different events with different setups, that would continue. It's not like we're gonna anchor the bleachers to a particular wall, so it has to be set up a certain way. And as, I've been around the state many years at various basketball games that I've coached, we have such portability for all our student events, whether it's athletics or something else, an assembly. That's the beauty of what we have is that flexibility and that will continue.
And you'd hate for the old ones that we're working with right now to get stuck in any more positions.
Oh, God. Good point.
Court one.
Yeah, permanent.
Okay.
Okay, are we, are we good with that?
We are. This is an act, warrant is an action item, so.
So are we entertaining Bruce's recommendation or?
Yes.
So I would, I'd like to make a motion that the board authorize administration to go forward with the, with the purchase of bleachers for E H S using available capital fund resources or maintenance dedicated resources. If the project can occur prior to June 30th.
Did you wanna establish any max?
I don't, I mean, I'm fine with using, the two, is it two? I wrote on it, 250. With a, with a maximum authorization of 250,000.
Okay.
Could you repeat that? So to go forward and purchase the bleachers for E H S using funds from?
The capital.
Capital.
Plan.
Plan. And also operational.
And, and.
Maintenance funds.
And resources dedicated to maintenance in the operating fund.
Up to a maximum of?
250.
That is dollars.
Like comma, as, as long as it can be acquired and done by June 30.
That's right.
I'll second that. Or make the motion.
Brian made the motion. Al's second. Second ding.
Good.
Second ding ding. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously.
Great. Thank you.
The next is our teacher appreciation planning day. And just to acknowledge that Erin has done such a great job since I've been on the board with that day. And, and the teachers I know have really appreciated your efforts. Not to say that I'm looking at you to do it again, but.
You're so transparent.
Yeah.
But this is the first time as chair you've ever done it.
Put pressure on Erin to do what she does well. So I know, I don't know, does everyone know what we've done in the past? Erin has organized those baskets and they've been lovely, and I don't know if you would be willing to do that again. If you would, that would be fantastic. Or if anyone has any other ideas?
The only thing I was gonna bring up is just because it is the last U-46 C T E board year.
Yeah.
You know, do we wanna do something special? Yeah, I, you know, I think we'd have to talk about, you know, I mean, how much we'd wanna spend. That's always the question with these sort of things, but I had in my mind, you know, yeah, you know, something, something with the years of the board or something with the logos of, of the existing board. But I, you know.
Two gentlemen at the end that could probably be really helpful and informing stuff that teachers would, or opportunities that teachers would enjoy.
So Erin, are you willing to take the lead on that?
Yeah, of course.
That would be great.
And if I can get some idea of.
A budget.
Yeah, I guess you'd have to just, you know, obviously, we don't wanna do anything, you know, much more than what we've done.
Championship ring for everybody.
You know, like at the Oscars, the little, the little bling bag. They could have a little bling bag. Oh, yeah. They could have a paperweight.
Mantle of bleachers and bleachers.
So.
Bomb fire.
That could be the biggest bonfire in Essex Junction.
So how do I determine what the budget is? You'll talk to Erin.
Connect with me and I can help you with that.
So that, that would be great.
Great. Anything else on that? So E W S D transition updates. Our budget passed. That's the, that's the big news, I think. That, and I, and I would personally like to thank everybody who worked on that. There were, there were a lot of moving parts and this budget what process was something I have, had never seen, the complexities of, and the way that the administration and the board moved through this process was really quite remarkable from, from my perspective. The support we got from the community for that budget, as Brian mentioned earlier, in all three communities, was an overwhelming vote of confidence and support in this, in the, and I think that's in large part due to the legacy boards that brought us there. So a lot of people are to be thanked for, for that hard work. And Judy, I just wanna special shout out to Judy for the amazing amount of work that you have put into this last year, especially as this, as this, after, since the vote to consolidate and the work that you have done to make, to bring us to where we are today with that vote of confidence. So thank you so much.
You had a great team.
Yes, everybody. Thank everybody.
Thank you.
That's the big, to me, that's the big update of where we are right now. That was a tremendous amount of work. And, and now we have a budget. And in July, we'll have students. And that will be fantastic. And I think that, again, we, I'm feeling really well supported by our community, our administration, our teachers, our students. Everybody seems to be well poised to make this a great success, so I'm really encouraged and optimistic moving forward. Anything else, Al, you wanna talk about the transition, for transition?
No, I think, I wasn't here over the annual meetings, but I did wanna ask, what happened on the co-mingle votes? Because I, I thought that was pretty much set.
Yeah, so there were, there was a lot of discussion that night about the co-mingling and there were, there were a lot of people, a few people who spoke at the mics about concerns that they thought it was less transparent to keep the votes be one. And a lot of people spoke to really wanting to know what their neighbor, how their neighbors were coming out on this point. And there was discussion around, is it more transparent and who is the transparency for? Is it for the board or is it for the community? Which was a really good discussion, I thought, around, the, the board had started off unanimously supporting that idea that we would co-mingle and begin to function as one district with all community, three communities starting to really feel like one. And the idea, I think, at the board level was that, that that would be helpful to be just one. This is one, one district, one vote. The discussion led to a kind of a different place and it was extremely close. It was, I think, do you remember the numbers, Brian?
Six.
Six votes difference.
It was six votes difference. And I think out of 50 people there, so, you know, it was, there, it was extremely close. Two of the board members changed their minds through that deliberation and, and didn't support it at the end because of the concerns that were voiced that night. As Martha pointed out that night, that this year couldn't have happened anyway because of the, of the legal structure of the vote this year. And so next year, we will decide as a board whether to, to ask the community again whether the, that co-mingling can take place. And there was some conversation about readiness and community readiness around, around that one voice, one vote. So again, the board will talk about that over the year and see if we put that on, on the, for next year's annual meeting and for the vote. And some people were expressing a real desire for the entire community to vote on that piece instead of the people who, who were able to attend the annual meeting. And so there was discussion that led to, again, an extremely close vote, but it didn't change the outcomes for this year anyway because we were, we, we knew we weren't going to be able to co-mingle this year.
So it was really more of just a, I don't wanna say it was moot, but the vote that occurred that night just, in essence, won't do anything really because it can't change the way the voting is gonna happen for the next vote. But what you're saying is, is that vote that night at the meeting won't impact the following? It will need to be voted on again.
Well, if it had passed at the meeting, then the voters would have given us the, the new, the E W S D board, the authority to co-mingle those votes for the next year in 2018. That didn't happen.
Okay.
So we will have to, if we, if the board decides to move in that direction, it will be another question to the community as to whether they want to co-mingle those votes or not. So that'll be the discussion over the year.
Okay. Yes. Okay.
Is that clear?
Good.
And I think that, that piece, that article is the only one that didn't pass in, in the night, that night, and everything else was pretty straightforward. There was some wordsmithing and some back and forth with, with getting that piece right, but, but everything else passed.
Good.
And you have a transportation community event coming up?
Yes, we do. On April 19, upstairs in the cafeteria, we will be having a community conversation on, on transportation. And thank you for bringing that up, Brian. That's a big piece of work. It's on the front page of the Essex Reporter this week. If you have a chance to look at that, it does a good job of explaining what's happening with transportation, what the complexities are all about and why we are hoping that the community will get together and, A, appreciate those complexities and understand why it's not an easy thing to, to change the busing for the communities. Essex Junction has never had busing before. Essex Town has, has, has had a very customized busing, basically door-to-door, every day can be different. And Westford has enjoyed busing K through 8, but the 9 through 12 is, is a new busing system. So we hope that the community will come out and be part of this conversation. It'll be a facilitated hour and a half conversation, looking into, really trying to, to, to peel apart people's concerns, hopes and dreams and concerns around busing as it, as it comes to the, to the district. It's going to come to the district, just to be clear. It's not a matter of whether the community wants to have busing or not. That decision has been made, that busing will be available. It's more a chance for the community to weigh in about what, what concerns them. Some of the things that we've heard even since we posted this on Facebook around safety and is my child gonna ride with, is my kindergartner gonna be? It's going to come to the district, just to be clear, it's not a matter of whether the community wants to have busing or not, that decision has been made, that busing will be available, it's more a chance for the community to weigh in about what, what concerns them, some of the things that we've heard even since we posted this on Facebook around safety, and is my child gonna ride with, is my kindergartner gonna be on a bus with a senior in high school, and lots of questions around transportation routes, uh, routing is not determined, is not going to be determined at that meeting, what we are hoping to get out of this, uh, community forum is, uh, what is a clear understanding of what the community can have a say in, and what needs to be decided by the administration and the professionals who are running the busing and the routing. But what we really want to, to do is help, um, is, is help the board understand the community concerns as we move forward in, in figuring out those routings, and how we're gonna, uh, get busing equitable, an equitable busing system across the three districts.
And when is that, uh?
It's April nineteenth, at the, uh, in the cafeteria at, uh, upstairs at Essex High School, and it's, um, from six to eight thirty, I believe, I don't, is it six to eight?
I thought it was six to eight.
Six to eight, I think there's, I, I actually know, if the meeting is from six, there's gonna be, you can come at five thirty, there's gonna be light refreshments that will be provided, and people can come at five thirty, uh, the meeting will start at six. Please come, we would love to have you all there.
Good.
Anything else on that? And just to mention, um, that all of this information, and thanks to Ben, Dickey, and others who are, who are maintaining, the, uh, ewsd.org website has all of this information, and all of the da, all the dates of upcoming meetings, and, and these community forums and events are on there, so, um, I know Vince Canillo and Ben have been working really hard to make that information available to the community, so for any questions, uh, please visit ewsd.org. Okay. Uh, and that moves us to community, uh, communication, and, uh, this is the practice of just what, um, any topics that need to be communicated from our board to the community that we can put out into the world, if, if anybody feels that there's anything we want.
Transition of power and, uh, highlighting email addresses.
Yep.
Big chairs.
Yep. There you have, transition of power.
I thought, I don't know.
I'll put my foreword on.
As far as communicating to the public, I, I really thought that, uh, I just thought, thought some of the information that we received from the principals about, um, unless this is already like something that's in the reporter or something, but just, you know, some of the results, um, from like the skills, yeah, and then the community service dinner, I just, I, I think it would be great to.
Acknowledge that.
Really acknowledge that, and maybe, you know, if that's something that maybe we could put in the Essex Reporter or something, I think that's, I mean, I was just amazed at how many first-year C T E students, you know, did so phenomenally well.
Yeah.
Came home with gold, so, I, I just think this is the kind of stuff that really, people that are voting and approving our budgets would really like to know.
I, I agree, and, and so that's the transition of power emails for everybody, and then on number four on our org notes here is all of that, all those details there that we could put out.
And all the, you know, all the kids that were working in the community, that's really huge.
It, it is, and it's great, this list of, it's a great group of kids, that, um, shows how, what people are doing inside the school. And Dan, just so you know, the process for that has been just to write that up and send it to Ben, and Ben will post it on the, on the, in the appropriate places.
Okay.
Okay, so we thought I'd like to move us into executives', um, session at seven oh six P M. Thank you, R E T N.
May have to move.
Are we, are we?
Here is any number of questions?
Yeah, they can.